Yeah, YPOA Police, YMEA Management, YEA Workers.
I'm sorry, we can't record close session, so.
We can't report.
All right, thank you very much, and welcome everyone to the Wairika City Council meeting for November fifteenth. I would first like to report out, there is no, there was no action taken during closed session. So on with the regular meeting. Uh, let's see where am I? One moment. All right, call to order, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I'd like everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands under the Constitution of America.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. Time is reserved at each regular meeting for those in the audience who wish to address the city council. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members will recognize, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions or of presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. And public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or staff. At this time, I'd like to open up, um, public comment period for anyone or items that are not on the agenda. Okay, no one's approaching. I will close public comments. Item ten, consent agenda. All matters listed under, under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held November first, two thousand and twenty-two. B, approval, ratification of payments issued from October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two through November sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. C, continuation of urgency ordinance, A sixty-four fireworks. D, continuation of urgency resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash fifty-one, remote public meetings. And E, wave full text reading of all ordinances on the agenda. Organizes shall be introduced and adopted by title only. At this time, I'd like to open for public comments on the consent agenda. There being no public comments, I will close and open to the council, please.
Go ahead. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you.
This is Councilwoman McCoy. I'll second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Council members, for your vote, Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Middleton.
Hi.
Mr. Freeman, Mrs. Freeman. Sorry. I, my vote is I and is the mayor online. Okay, so that concludes the vote count for tonight. Yes. That's why you have me batting team. Okay, um, planning director, agenda title, Howell Barnes, tentative parcel map, public hearing. Uh, the city of Wairika Planning Department received a tentative parcel map application filed by Ken Barnes. The proposed tentative parcel map would subdivide one, two point zero zero acre, acre parcel assessors, parcel number zero six two dash zero four one dash four zero zero into three separate parcels. The existing parcel includes two commercial buildings, eighteen twenty-nine South Oregon Street and eighteen thirty-three South Oregon Street and paid parking area. The property is zoned in one light industrial and has a general plan use designation of general commercial. The proposed parcels would maintain the current zoning and land use designations. Staff report.
That's actually a pretty good summarization. It's a, it's a very straightforward tentative parcel map. And so just to let everyone know for the subdivision map act, tentative parcels have to be presented to both the city council and the planning commission for approval to ensure that it meets the current general plan. Uh, it is consistent with the two thousand and two plan. It is consistent with our zoning code and that we have gone through an appropriate environmental process. The planning commission held a duly noticed public hearing on October twenty-sixth at a special meeting where they are recommending that the city council approve the attached resolution with the conditions. And at that meeting, they also successfully adopted a class fifteen exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. So that you are not needed to adopt that CEQA exemption again, since there was no appeal filed on that from the planning commission meeting. So what's in front of you tonight is just a proposal to approve the, uh, proposed tentative parcel map. And then we will move into a final map package. Uh, the final map does not come back to the city council. It basically just goes to the city engineer. And then we work with the county entitled companies to record it. So going into this, uh, there are, as you said, two existing commercial buildings. It'll separate a large parcel that is across the street from the Ford dealership on South Oregon Street. Uh, it will divide it into three properties. One will be, uh, one will be a vacant property that could be eligible for development in the future under the M one zoning district, which is light industrial. And there are no proposals for development at this time, so that is not part of the project tonight, so it's not under consideration. Um, and then, uh, the findings which are on page sixty of your packets are very straightforward. As I said before, we just have to find it consistent with the current zoning code and general plan, which the planning commission have made the recommendation that it is. And, uh, we have done review from our outside agencies and duly notice this. We received no public comment um, prior to this meeting concerning this item, but I would, um, request that you open and close the public hearing and take the public comment on this, uh, at the meeting today. Um, and then if you are satisfied with the conditions and the resolution, you may approve tonight if you so choose. Uh, Ken Barnes is here tonight. If you'd like to ask the applicant any questions.
All right, thank you. Right now, open for public comments on this issue only. Are there any questions? Seeing no one approach, I will close public comments and present to council for discussion.
No questions.
Okay, I actually do have a couple of questions. Number one, was the applicant informed of, uh, the time limit of two years and they have to come back?
Yes, and actually, I've been working with their surveyor to get the final MAC package in by the end of this calendar year. Because if you are able to get it in by the end of this calendar year, you do not have to be assessed taxes twice next year. So we're actually working with them to get it recorded and all of the conditions met within the next couple of months, which is very doable for this project.
Okay, one more question regarding the parking. Uh, the, is it the new parcel that's going to have to share parking space?
No, it is the current. The current to, uh, a commercial uses will have to share the parking agreement mainly for the ADA parking requirements.
Okay, thank you. I'm good. What are the wishes of the council?
After having looking, looked this over and having recommendation come from both the office, both our city office, planning department and from the planning commission, I, Councilwoman McCoy, will make the, uh, motion. Let me read it so I get it done correctly. Uh, to approve a resolution number two zero two two dash five zero of the city council of the city of Wairika approving tentative parcel map number two zero two two dash one five for the subdivision of a two acre assessor's parcel, number zero six two dash zero four one dash four zero zero into three distinct parcels with conditions.
Councilwoman Middleton, I will second the motion.
I have a first and a second, and I will take roll call. Council members, McCoy.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion passes. Thank you. Madam twelve, agenda title fundraising activity for K nine officer Luna.
All the way.
Maybe not. Sorry, I couldn't tell who was making that comment. Ray Booton, Lieutenant, Wairika Police Department. I was inadvertently roped into this tonight, since my chief is on vacation and my K nine officer conveniently has training on the Oregon coast, uh, left me the decision of presenting for him or council of training, so I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this went before the finance committee, I believe, this last week. Uh, this is our sergeant, K nine Sergeant Hasmeyer requesting to use Wairika Police Department name, uh, and likeness in similar like badges and that type of design. Uh, you were given a two-page packet with some pictures of some, some of the products on it. Uh, it's going to be citizens that are making these items for the K nine program, where police department K nine program, which will go towards fundraising for the K nine program itself. Uh, initially, any other funds received for the merchandise that they want to try to raffle off and sell and do that kind of thing with will go to the Wairika Police Officers Association earmarked for the K nine program until the K nine program itself gets its nonprofit status, which they're going to be working on. So it would have to be approval of the council to use the likeness, to use the name of the Wairika Police Department for the K nine program items and allowing them to become like your authorization, so they can become tax exempt as well. This will help future, uh, of the K nine program. I think it's, it's tremendous. We've had a K nine program before and none of this was done. Uh, I didn't want to bore you and read the whole request to all the council that's intelligent enough to read it. The, uh, there already are some of these items out and there's other items that will be one presented the other day was the like sweatshirts with some of these designs on it. And Sergeant Hasmeyer will have a board on the K nine program when it becomes nonprofit, um, helping make decisions and he will make sure that nothing tarnishes the Wairika Police Department's name, the K nine program, the city of Wairika. The, they'll address anything if someone becomes offended with some sort of product or some sort of design. We'll take every effort to look into it. Maybe have to bring it to council to make a vote on it in the future for something like that. But I haven't seen anything yet that, that should draw any, uh, discontent from the citizens in the community.
Thank you. Public comment first, yeah. Pardon me. At this time, I'd like to open for public com- comment regarding this item. No one approaching, I will close public comment. Council members.
You want to go first?
Just would like to say thank you, um, to Lieutenant Booton. Um, I think this is a wonderful program. Um, I've had the honor of meeting, um, is it Sergeant Luna? Does she have a title?
Just officer.
Officer. And, uh,
Actually, I think the way it goes, though, she actually should be a lieutenant.
Oh.
Well, with you. And I, I love the idea of this, that it's going to be a nonprofit and, uh, people can donate money. I would love to buy a sweatshirt or whatever those two guys are selling because I so support this program. And I really like, uh, I really like the one that has her picture on it.
Yes.
Honestly, I think that you are, you know, very nicely put together, not offensive in any way. Uh, and the city and the department, well, that's what I think.
I, I want to thank, uh, this is Councilwoman McCoy. I want to thank you, Lieutenant, for being here on behalf of CAGS and council. One of the things that when, uh, the finance committee met, we did, uh, we queried Sergeant Hasmeyer, isn't it now, um, in regards to good standards, I mean, not as a police officer, of putting out products that were good standards and, and, uh, and he brought up some issues that he did not want to happen. And so I, you know, so he's aware of, of that, you know, he doesn't want any like nude dog calendars and anything like that, you know, so. But, um, but, um, um, you know, we're, we're in a, a world today where our police officers, not just in Wairika, but everywhere. And it does include where you are under attack. Um, we have cops that are murdered weekly in this, and I don't mean they're shot in the line of duty. They're murdered in the line of duty. They, people sneak up on their car and shoot them. And we, we have worked well, but, but a police officer is a police officer anywhere. So they, they're, they're, they're all playing there. It's no different than from here to Stockton to as far as the safety issues that they're that they're facing. And we have an opportunity now, along with our CSO and some of our outreach programs to continue to reach out more with, uh, Luna, with this officer, this K nine officer. And I think this is a really, really good idea. And I think that everybody, I, I know everybody in the committee, I could speak for them, thought it was a wonderful idea. Um, we all suggested the five oh one C status, which they'll work on. And until then, they'll work under the YPOA. We also noted that, uh, they wanted to use a badge or likeness or reasonable facsimile of the badge patch and, um, also noted that in the collection and disbursement, as I said, of money that that would go into a five oh one C. So, um, this is great press with the public as far as meeting this dog. This dog is a wonderful dog. It's, I think it's already a facilitated one arrest, which is wonderful, I thought, last week.
Yes, it did have a positive alert, which resulted in an arrest.
So, yeah, um, and, you know, Artie has helped us before. For those who don't know, Artie's been out chaste dog and he's come up and, and, uh, you know, we pay when we bring Artie up here and Artie's been wonderful to come up here and Artie has his own, even has his own stuffed plush toy that she's been buying from, from how she asked. And it's just a great outreach, so I'm, I'm very supportive of it. And of course, we know Luna is just, she is just a wonderful dog and at no cost to the city or the police department, Luna, now that she's old enough, is being, uh, somebody's donating both her, um, Kevlar vest. Because yes, they're shot at and kill and the, the criminals tried to kill them, uh, Kevlar vest and her badge. So we're, we're very, very excited, uh, for, for Luna. Thank you very much.
Just one comment is kind of going off what Councilwoman McCoy stated is, uh, we're lucky to have this program and this officer Luna because it all started with a, um, it was about a year ago that a, uh, dog was given, provided just for free. And it did not work out. And then our chief went out and, uh, found the funding and worked hard to get us a dog. And so it's, uh, came to reality of being able to have, um, K nine Luna. And, um, I want to thank everybody who's been involved, um, you know, the chief stepping up, everybody, and also, um, Sergeant. Sergeant, all right.
That's my.
Yep, Sergeant wanted to make sure I get his title right. We had some step up, so, um, for, uh, stepping up to be the handler. It's a great program. It's great to see and, uh, anybody out there supporting, uh, this wonderful addition to our police is, uh, this is outstanding that our town finally has one again. So thank you.
Amen.
Lieutenant Booton.
And I support everything that was said, so. And council members, do I have a motion? Oh, you're not done? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I, I am ready to make motion if you're ready.
Please do.
Okay, I would like to make the motion, uh, that we go forward. I don't have the exact motion that we go forward with the Wairika Police Department. There it is. Okay, motion to approve resolution. Motion of the Wairika City Council to approve the fundraising activities being presented, logos and graphics and marketing products to support the Wairika Police Department's K nine program. And used for the five oh one C three.
Thank you. In a second.
Councilwoman Middleton, I will second the motion.
All right, I'll take a vote. Council members, McCoy.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
And I'll, I as well. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to thank the citizens too that have already donated to the, and the businesses that donated to the K nine program already. Uh, the outpouring from the community has been huge. And on a side note, that John Freeman Smith reminded me of earlier tonight before this presentation, you'll all get an email invite to shop with a cop. This year is going to be December fourteenth, uh, five thirty PM. Mark your calendars. I'll see you all there. And it's going to be probably the biggest one yet.
Over fifty.
Oh, wow.
It'll be awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And thank you for all your work on that over the years.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Twelve B, uh, resolutions authorizing the city, and that's plural people. There's four of them. Resolutions authorizing the city to apply for grant funds from the state of California to enter into funding agreements and to designate representatives to sign agreements, any, and any amendments thereto for the following projects. One, wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Two, Wairika Creek sewer improvement project. Three, water main replacement project. Four, South Wairika water supply and distribution improvements project. Take it away, staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Chris Tim Barrett and council members. Matthew Bray, your Director of Public Works. Um, this is the time of year where we're buttoning down our larger construction projects. As you've seen, I've spoken to at previous meetings. Um, but it's also the time of year where we're digging back into our master plans and effectively building step one, step two, step three of, uh, those projects from the master plans that have been, some of them laying there for eight or 10 years. This year, I'm very excited because we've got four large projects here in front of you tonight. I can go through them quickly. The first one is clean water state revolving fund money, which staff refers to generally as SRF. We have clean water and, um, the drinking water from the SRF. So there's a, there's a couple of both here. Um, the first one is the wastewater treatment plant improvement projects, which I've mentioned at previous meetings, I believe. It's a full electrical upgrade of the plant, uh, full SCADA electronic controls, uh, remote operation, all of the good things that we have on the water side of our, our operations, um, is bringing the plant up to twenty twenty-two standards. We haven't done any large, uh, upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant since it was built, really, except for the centrifuge and a few smaller items. So this is long overdue, much needed and helps us as a first step in our master planning for the growth that we're anticipating in coming years. So while this one doesn't build us out additional capacity now, it's step one. Step two is taking it up, adding more clarifiers, a whole nother project to get more capacity through the plant. And then step three of that, we'll be going back out in the collection system in the street and adding some more work out there. So it's baby steps, but they're, um, they're actually big steps. So that one, um, I don't have any engineering estimates yet because we were just taking these out. Um, that one, we've already done an expenditure for, uh, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars to get going on that one. Previous meetings and, um, all of these projects. We dive back into the water, the sewer reserves to get pace going, get the engineering and all that going, and then they're fully reimbursable at the end. So there's no city match because we're meeting with disadvantaged. Um, so we're going to see, if you thought Main Street was big, hold your hat. Um, so that's that one, the wastewater plant. And then we've got the clean water, number two, state revolving fund planning grid app for the, uh, Wairika Creek sewer improvement. This is another one dug out of the master plans. Um, we have a number of antiquated sewer lines that run under and over Wairika Creek, the length of town that need to be cleaned up and fixed up. So this is one that's actually coming from staff wishes over the last eight or 10 years. I'm excited for that one. That's, that's takes a lot of the, the headaches out of, uh, Ben Miller and Tyler Harker's daily lives. Um, the third one is drinking water state revolving fund. For water main replacement project, and that is directly taken from our living, breathing water master plan. There's a number of, uh, pipes up in the northwest quadrant of town that we didn't catch in previous projects. And we're going to button that up. And then the fourth one is actually a little different. It's Department of Water Resources. Uh, we were initially chasing a different pot of money for this, but, um, our wonderful engineers at Pace found this urban community drought relief funding through Department of Water Resources. It's the same, no match, um, everything's reimbursable. And that one is actually putting Greenhorn Reservoir back online. So Greenhorn was originally built as a water reservoir for our citizens. And when, at the time that our city group passed it, um, that's when we went out and found Fall Creek and brought that into town. And at that point, it was really looked upon as more as a recreation area since then, but we've kept it within the the, the permits and the licensing for the water rights. We've always kept those up. And, uh, I'm very excited to get Greenhorn back online as an emergency, emergency backup water, you know, it wouldn't be feeding every day. But, um, in times of drought, which we're living through every year and fire, it's nice to have that reservoir full of water there, so. That's the short of it. If you have any questions on any of them, I'm more willing to answer.
We usually ask questions after public comment. Is that all right?
That is fine.
I'd like to open the public comment section at this time. If anyone has questions on this item only, any of the four grant possibilities. There being no one approaching, I will close public comments and return to council for comments and questions.
Questions for me?
Oh, that's very.
It is. I will take a motion one at a time.
I'll do the first. Is that okay? We make sure it gets the right one. I make the recommendation for the one that deals with the wastewater treatment plan, WWTP improvement plan. Um, this is Councilman McCoy. Make a motion to approve resolution two zero two two dash four six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika, authorizing the city to apply for grant funds from the state of California to enter into a funding agreement and to designate representatives to sign agreements and any amendments thereto for the wastewater treatment plant. W, also known as WWTP improvement project.
In a second, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Joan Smith Freeman, uh, Councilmember Freeman, and I would like to second that motion.
All right, uh, council vote is McCoy.
I.
Middleton.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Myself, I. Motion passes. Item number two. Do I have a motion?
Else was going to do it. I would like to make the recommended motion for item number two, Wairika Creek Sewer Improvement Project. Um, this is a motion to approve resolution, um, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, a resolution of the city council, the city of Wairika, authorizing the city to apply for grant funds from the state of California. Project would include necessary upgrades to the WWTP, including installing an influent flow meter and S C A N D A scan depth to facilitate operation and monitoring of the plant.
In a second.
Councilwoman Middleton, I will second the motion.
Roll call vote. Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
I'm sorry, council member, uh, Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Myself, I. Item number three. I'll make the motion. This is Debbie Baird. Uh, drinking water state, I'd like to move to approve in a minute. Uh, mo- motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika, authorizing the city to apply for grants from the state of California to enter into a funding agreement and to designate representatives to sign agreements and any amendments thereto for the water main replacement project. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And a roll call vote. Council members, McCoy.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
And myself, I. Item number four, please.
I guess I'll go and the mission for, um, for, for the South Wairika Water Supply Dis- Distribution Improvements Project. I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash forty-nine, a resolution for the city council, the city of Wairika, authorizing the city to apply for grant funds from the state of California to enter into a funding agreement and designate representatives to sign agreements and any amendments there of the South Wairika Water Supply Distribution Improvement Project.
In a second, please.
This is Councilwoman McCoy. I'll second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Council member vote, please. McCoy.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
And myself, I. All motions pass, and thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you so much. We'll get to work.
Matthew, thank you, Matt. Appreciate it, Mike.
Okay, the last item on the agenda. Uh, city council interviews with applicants for the planning commission, and I have a speech. Sit back, relax. Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for applying to serve on this quasi judicial body of the city of Wairika. Before we get started, we want to note a correction. Before we get started, we want to note a correction on one of the applicant's name. It should read Anne Oland. And not Anna. Thank you for your understanding. We got it right. Uh, these interviews are to fill two seats on the Planning Commission, and the new seats will expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. One seat is to fill outgoing Planning Commissioners, Richard Rolzinski's seat, and the other is to fill Matt Osborne's seat. He is an incumbent who is reapplying. For fairness and transparency, all applicants are being interviewed. We have four questions for each of the applicants, and the council will, will rotate. Asking the questions. Please note, when an applicant has reached five minutes, our planning director will show. You an orange card. And at a seven, and at seven minutes, a red card. Ooh, that's serious, and. Please wrap it up card, so. Staff. Juliana.
I actually, just a quick update for the, the staff report is that Matt Osborne is actually not going to be requesting to be reassigned. So he has asked to. Resign, uh, his concern was having enough people apply for the two open seats, and so he had applied very early in the process. And he was not made aware that we had had several other applicants in that time, and so he is respectfully stepping down. So his last meeting will be tomorrow. With Richards as well. Um, these, the position is, excuse me. So the position expired in March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Uh, typically, it's the purpose of the city clerk to follow when some of these appointments are up, and we happen to have a um. A little bit of a change in the city clerk position around March, April. And so, uh, we were not made aware that their terms had expired in March until we had, uh, gotten Reda into the position. As well as our contract, uh, clerk advisor Sylvia. And so we had begun the search for filling these two seats and going through the transparent process. Uh, Richard Rolzinski, although um, from what he has shared, is appreciative of his position, has since moved out of the city limits of the city of Waireka. And is no longer uh, eligible to serve on the Planning Commission. Per our municipal code. So upon appointment, these two appointees will serve until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So it's a four-year appointment. Our next uh, three seats are, yeah, three seats will be up in two years for, for reappointment and interview. So uh, I do have uh, an accommodation for tonight. Uh, one of our applicants, Dawn Marie Autry, is, is not well, and so has asked. For her responses to be read, so I will read those when we get to her questioning. Um, do you have any questions on the process? Okay, so I'll let you guys take it away.
Oh, as in me, guys? Oh. Okay, so the first person on the list is. Dawn Maria Autry. So would you um? Because it's gonna be difficult to go back and forth, would you like to go ahead and just? Report out on what she asked?
Yes, so for our first question, and just to let everyone know, all the applicants were given the questions earlier today. The first one is, why would you like to serve on Planning Commission? Dawn Marie wants to be on the Planning Commission to make a difference in her community. She would like to help shape the future of our town into a beautiful, thriving town. Her answer for when it comes to land use matters, do you have a personal item you are interested in? If not, are you particularly passionate? About a particular development matter? Um, Dawn Marie Autry has said, no, she does not at this time. Uh, question number three, if you were to be appointed, are you aware you have filing obligations disclosing your economic interests annually? A two-hour ethics training course every two years and monthly planning commission meetings that could take up to two hours. Dawn Marie has answered, yes, she is aware that there. Um, is personal time involved, as well as she knows these meetings cannot be any longer than city council meetings, and. She has not missed many city council meetings since two thousand eight. Uh, for the fourth and final question, uh, planning commission involves coming to consensus and advocating for the general public on land matters. How would you work with other commissioners and the public to find common ground on complex issues? Dawn Marie has answered, there are always differences in opinions on all sides. Listening and gathering the best opinions for, from the public has never been a problem for her. Dawn Marie does, does it every time for city council meetings. And she will never have a problem working with all party involved to help fix complex issues when given the chance. And that concludes her responses.
Okay, thank you. Now, um, at this point, because we've never done this before, do you want to open up for council to ask? Uh, Ms. Autry, if she. To ask Ms. Autry any other additional questions, or we leave it at this?
So we ask you to stay with the, the stock questions for everyone to make it fair um, and equal, but if you have any clarification. Uh, questions about her application, which I believe starts on page ninety-six of your packets. Um, or any of these responses, you may do so. Um, we just ask that you stay under the seven-minute mark for a conversation back and forth with the applicant. And I'm not aware of Ms. Autry's status to answer additional questions, but um, I'll leave that up to you if you, how you would like to do that.
That. I don't have any additional questions. I don't know if anyone else does.
No.
And because you've given us. A narrow field to work in, I'm, I'm good with just moving on. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, our next applicant is. Matt, and he is. Designed, so the third one in is Louise Gliotto. I'm actually a little confused because you answered for her, but okay. Did, did all the council members have time to read all of these? Please tell me, yes. Okay.
May I ask a, a question, not of, of Ms. Gliotto, but of Juliana. Ethics training, in addition to that, in addition to ethics training, aren't they also required every two years to have a um? Training on.
Sexual harassment?
Sexual harassment.
I did when I was on planning.
I believe there is also a sexual harassment training. We try to do those both uh, modules together, so we usually try to do both the sexual harassment. Which is a state mandated training, and then the ethics training, which is also state mandated.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, and at this point, I just asked the question and they read what they. Okay. Please. Why do you want to serve on the Planning Commission?
I'm interested in serving in, on the Planning Commission because I strongly believe. In our community and citizens being informed and engaged in local government. The Planning Commission is vital in so many ways, safeguarding our way of life, improving our environment. Preserving our rural culture, protecting Waireka's financial health and vitality. I'd be honored to be part of the team working on updating Waireka's general plan.
Thank you. And question number two, when it comes to land use matters, do you have any personal items you are interested in? If not, are you particularly passionate about a particular development manner, matter?
I'm particularly interested in Waireka's general plan update. The State Office of Planning and Research has seven elements that must be addressed in the plan. They are land use, mobility, housing, open space, noise, and safety. Meeting all these requirements while preserving our rural culture and financial health will be a challenge. In the coming years for the Planning Commission, City Council, and Waireka citizens.
Item number three, question number three, if you were to be appointed, are you aware you have? Filing obligations disclosing your economic interest annually, a two-hour ethics training course every two years, and monthly planning commission meetings. That can take up to two hours.
Uh, no, I wasn't aware of the financial filings. I don't remember seeing that on the application, but this would not be a problem for me. The ethics training would be welcome. Yes, I am aware of the monthly meetings. This would be doable for me. As I'm retired with no family responsibilities.
Thank you. Question four, planning commission involves coming to consensus and, and advocating for the general public. On land use matters, how would you work with the other commissioners and the public? Public to find common ground on complex issues.
My previous working experience and community involvement have given me opportunities to work on teams, committees, and boards. Where I have worked successfully with a variety of occupations, backgrounds, political beliefs and opinions. For example, I started and managed the Mount Diablo cardiac rehab program in Contra Costa County for eighteen years. It was my responsibility to promote the program to the public and doctors. I worked with insurance companies to. To secure coverage and reimbursement and coordinated with a team of physical therapists. As well as staffing a team of nursing and managing the budget. The Mount Diablo cardiac rehab program is still going today. I was on the Siskiyou County Water Users Board for four years. In addition to becoming knowledgeable about the importance of our four Klamath dams to our community. I had an opportunity to work with ranchers, PhD scientists and engineers. In two thousand and ten, I coordinated the Siskiyou Water Users Ballot Advisory Measure G. Which received an unprecedented seventy-nine percent of the votes to retain the Klamath River Dams. I have many more examples of my ability to successfully work with different boards and committees. When the interest of time, I refer you to my application. I would be honored if you chose me to serve on the committee. Thank you.
Next applicant, Anne Oland. Why do you want to serve on the Planning Commission?
Well, I know most of you, and you know that my. Family and husband and I have lived here forty-one years. Um, my husband's family has uh, the original. Um, homestead from the eighteen fifties. And then my husband and I had a business, a local business for thirty-seven years. So we have deep roots here in the community. And um, we, I would like to see. The city of Waireka grow and um, grow past where we are with good planning. And I would like to turn some of the decline around. I would like to see light industry and homes, affordable homes brought into the area. I would like to see Waireka move into a position where it welcomes our children back. Rather than them having to leave. I know all of you feel the same way. Uh, but I would like to do all this without sacrificing our heritage and the charm of our town. That's part of who we are. Um, I have common sense and I am fiscally conservative. And putting plans forward for our community takes that type of thinking. Being fiscally responsible, practical, looking for growth that will benefit both the city of Waireka and its citizens.
If I can interrupt you and, and go back to the questions, if that's all right, please.
Sure.
Okay, question number two, when it comes to land use matters, do you have any personal items? You are interested in? If not, are you particularly passionate about a particular development matter?
No.
Question three, if you were to be appointed, are you aware you have filing obligations disclosing your economic interest annually? It to our ethics training course every two years and monthly planning commission meetings that can take up to two hours?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Uh, sure, if it's brief.
It will be.
Okay. Cause he just gave us a five minute.
Oh, okay.
I have one more question to ask. Let me ask, so you get your fair answers. Uh, question four, planning commission involves coming to consensus and advocating for the general public on land use matters. How would you work with the other commissioners and the public to find common ground on complex issues?
Well, um, number one, I raised two boys. So I think I can stand in the middle, listen to all sides. Um, put my personal opinions aside. And work with the interests of both sides and have compromises and negotiation for the common good.
Thank you. What, what was your question?
Will there be education of, for the new members on the Brown Act?
Yes.
Thank you.
City manager, Ledbetter, would you like to expand on that?
No, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you. Marlene Billingsley.
Hey, hello. Uh, question number one, why do you want to serve on the Planning Commission? I've lived here for fifty-two years, moved here around six years old. And I love Waireka. Is, I love Siskiyou County. It's my, my community. My kids have been raised here. I was raised here, and I want to make Waireka the best it can possibly be.
Okay. Question two, when it comes to land use matters, do you have any personal? Item you are interested in? If not, are you particularly passionate about a particular development matter?
There would be two items that I'm passionate about. One would be business. I used to work with businesses, marketing for the fifteen years. I would sell television advertising in, in our community and South County. And that was very important to me. To make our, to help our businesses be successful. So I have a passion for Minor Street and the rest of the business district. And helping businesses grow and prosper. And then my other passion would be housing. I get calls as a realtor every day. We do not have enough housing, whether it's rentals or homes to buy. There is just not enough. Housing in California and in Waireka in particular. So that's my two passions.
Thank you. Question number three, if you were to be appointed, are you aware you have filing obligations disclosing your economic interest annually? A two-hour ethics training course every two years and monthly planning commission meetings that can take up to two hours?
Yes. And that's not a problem either. I've done ethics training a lot.
Question number four, planning commission involves. Coming to consensus and advocating for the general public on land use matters. How would you work with the other commissioners? And the public to find common ground on complex issues?
I've had a lot of experience of that. Over the years, I've served on boards for Little League Soccer. Walk to MS, and you have a diverse group of people who all want something different. And the best way you can serve is ask questions and listen. And then encourage people to work together. Okay, and I don't envy your job tonight. After listening to these two ladies. I'm in complete agreement with what they said, and you're gonna have a hard job tonight, too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, commissioners, how about discussion? It's a faction item, okay. All the applicants are here. At this time, I'd like to open for public comment, please. There being no one coming down.
I'm sorry, online.
Okay.
Can you take a question?
Yes, sir.
For all the uh, uh, this is Brian Devlin, Commissioner, uh, Planning Commissioner. For the applicants, does anybody have any practical experience? Developing property? In the city of Waireka? And what was their experience? And what would they change? Thank you.
Okay, I'll take one applicant at a time, and you can come to the podium and, and answer those two questions. Uh, let's see, any experience with developing in the city Waireka? And what was the second one?
What their, what their experience was, and if there was any part of the process they would want to change.
This is the city manager, and as much as I respect the question, this is public comment. Unfortunately, so. This isn't, the questions have already been articulated, and so this is the city council's opportunity and. Uh, as the agenda states, it's not a question and answer.
Okay. Just public comment, I am sorry.
I would actually concur with the city manager on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanian.
You're welcome.
Okay, what would you like from us now, Mr. Ledbetter?
Question. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's uh, the city council's leisure if they would like to digest all the information and make a decision. At the following meeting unless they are ready to make a motion and a decision for two candidates this evening.
What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilmember McCoy. I, I think we have four wonderful candidates here. We are missing. Uh, a councilman. Um, our council person, and um, I would like to digest this some more. And then have a chance to uh. To, you know, to look at everything again. Prior to making a decision. On two candidates.
If, is the next meeting gonna have a different city council though? Because that.
No. Negative.
Okay, great.
Is there anything around, opinion here?
No, I, I, I agree that we could, we've, we've listened to some great applicants and. I would like time to think it over, then also. Have our other council member back for a. A full council, but if we could bring it, definitely bring it back on the, this is the sixth, December sixth. Is that our next meeting?
That's correct.
If we could bring it back then for a decision, that'd be great, since we're already. Passed the time to fill these.
Councilmember Freeman?
I concur. Uh, I, I, I know all of them, and I think that we're very fortunate to have so many good qualified. People applying for this. Uh, however, our mayor isn't here. I do believe that he should be here. Hopefully, he'll be well by the next meeting. He's sick. For those of you that don't know, he's very sick. And we have another council member that's hanging on by his toenails. Which is why I have this every time you talk.
And I moved way over here.
Anyway.
The room's tippy.
Yeah, I, I concur, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, at this point, we are going to postpone our decision until the next city council meeting. But I want to make a point of saying thank you to all the applicants for their patience, because this has taken a while. To get to this point in, and we will make a decision, promise. Okay. And that concludes this item. And at this point, uh, the last agenda item has been, um, removed from this. Meeting and will be. Back on the sixth.
That's correct.
Okay. And so now it's time for staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Baird and the Waireca City Council, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So I have a, just a brief update on some meetings that I attended, so last night I was rather busy, I, uh, entertained. The Nevada, Nevada City Arts Council, Nevada County Arts Council was in town. They had applied for a grant for the North State. Um, through the state of California, that's gonna open up about four million dollars for the northern counties for art projects. And so we had a meeting at the community center, uh, with some local artists to just debrief them on this grant opportunity. I also ran over to the merchant meeting to make an announcement at the downtown merchant meeting in the middle of that. On eleven-seven, I attended, uh, with, uh, um, council member Smith Freeman. The EDC quarterly meeting, we attended that via Zoom in my office. Uh, on eleven-two, I attended the Lions meeting, uh, to give a presentation there in Waireca. And then I just have a real brief announcement, working with Brian Favreau at the Elks. Uh, he wanted me to point out a couple things, um, preparing for. The holiday parade that's coming up, that, uh, Ben Miller will set up a time to meet with his, um. With him, uh, and go over what's gonna happen next week, Cliff's trophies has all the ribbons and trophies in stock, uh, for the event. Uh, and he currently has nine parade signups. Um, he has a vintage fire engine, he has music, um, he's got the YMCA commercial and non-commercial. And he's got horses and the military will most likely be represented as well. And I also have, he got posters set up, so I pass these around to city council. If you'd like to see it again, and this will be in the city hall. So if you are going to be in town, please attend. Uh, this is happening here on November twenty-sixth, I believe. Downtown on Minor Street from eleven to one PM. That's all I have for you guys tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any department head reports?
There is not.
Okay, council members. None from council member McCoy?
Actually, it looks like we may have assistant city manager Reda may like to.
Oh, good. Okay.
Was that Joan? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, um, my motion was to approve resolution two twenty-two dash forty-seven. A resolution of the city council, the city of Waireca, authorizing the city to apply for grant funds. From the state of California to enter into a funding agreement. And to designate representatives to sign agreements and any agreements thereto for the Waireca Creek Sewer Improvement Project.
Do you need a new vote?
What she read just now was my understanding, count, this is Councilman McCoy.
And you said, get the motion, thank you.
Yes. Continue?
Yes, please.
Uh, Mr. McCoy, did you want to make a comment? Mr. Reddick? Council members?
No, I don't think you have anything to report, just, um. Next week's Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, it's hard to believe it's here, and, um, if everybody can tend the parade, it's back to. The daytime, like it has been for many years when I was a kid growing up and being there morning at eleven o'clock. Family that was out of town, so, um, we're very lucky the Elks have, um, stepped up to. Bring the tradition back as, uh, it's been for several years, and, um. With some changes and COVID, so I hope everybody gets out and support it, and everybody has a great Thanksgiving, and I will end there.
All righty, that's from member Freeman.
Oh, I'll keep it short and sweet, um, I think most everything's been reported on. But yes, I did attend the EDC annual fall meeting, uh, we were, I was going to go to McLeod. However, it was snowing in McLeod, and I've been over that past many times, when it was part of my district, when it was on the Board of Supervisors. So we stayed here at the city and we participated, um, via Zoom. Also, the same night there was the Elks, uh, meeting about the holiday parade, and they are. Energized, enthusiastic, and very excited about putting on the parade. And so, um, I received many phone calls and texts today, and thank you for following up on them, I truly appreciate that, but they're very excited. They're going to have, there was one, um. Major change is that where the lineup is, used to be over at Jackson Street School, we're not allowed to do that anymore. Because of the changes in the education system and some things that have happened around the country. So, all of the lineup's gonna be taking place right here, right in city parking lot. And they're already having signs made up, big signs that they're holding up, that will say registration here, lineup here. Uh, and so there shouldn't be any questions, uh, I think it's going to go very smoothly. Uh, and, uh, Mark Dean, who is the former, uh, executive director of the Chamber years ago. And said he has done like twenty-six of these parades, is, uh, helping, he had some health issues. So he can't be in charge of the parade, but he's giving some really good advice. So, um, also, we had a finance committee meeting on the ninth. And, uh, we met with the fire chief on that, the whole, uh, finance committee, as well as we were fortunate to have. Uh, Sergeant Cash, and I'm, I'm unclear if it's Lieutenant Luna or Sergeant Luna. But I was, I was Officer Luna, I was so pleased to be able to meet her, and what a delight she is. Uh, and so that was, that's kind of all the excitement I can stand.
All right. And that concludes everything, because I don't have a bunch to add, other than have a good and safe. Thanksgiving with family and friends, thank you.
Oh, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, adjourned.